Started the recording, so.
All right. Well, we'll give it a half a minute now.
Hello, all.
Hi.
I didn't want you to do this without me.
We're just in time. It is 5:00 PM. We're ready to go. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Peterborough, New Hampshire Select Board Meeting for October 6th, 2020. I'm Tyler Ward. I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. And along with me is fellow Select Board Member Bill Taylor. Our other fellow Select Board Member Ed Youngst. We have Rodney Bartlett, Town Administrator. Nicole McStay, Deputy Town Administrator. Chief Ed Walker is here from Fire and Rescue. And for tonight, we are actually back up and running on Comcast Channel 22. If you're watching us on Facebook, you already know that we're there. And is Ustream available as well tonight?
Yes.
Excellent. Right, so we have Tim Brezovic here as well, doing some of our technology for us. And I know Fosh Farshai set up Bill Taylor in the office there, or in the Select Board Meeting Room. So tonight's agenda, we'll start off with Chief Walker and a pre-disaster mitigation grant discussion. We have some new business. This may be, this may be the most chatter that's going around town. What in the world are we doing about trick-or-treating this year? We'll also discuss an outdoor watering ban. If you haven't noticed, it's been super dry. We have a couple of proclamations that we're proud to share with you this evening. One regarding a Purple Heart Town and another honoring Mifalda Muffy Bocelli Ames. We'll get back to some old business and we'll hear an update from Karen Hatcher. She's joining us from the Community and Economic Development Coordinator position. An update on the racial justice movements in town. We'll discuss a contract extension with Drum and alteration, an alteration approval. They've proposed a new plan going forward. I know things have changed because of not being able to be around people and that sort of thing. And we'll have some board and committee appointments. And then we'll review and approve Select Board minutes from September 2nd. Did I miss anything regarding how are people reaching us or getting to us? Yeah. Great. Thanks, everyone. I don't have my phone on me, so I won't be able to see what's happening with, with Facebook for questions or, sort of that sort of thing. So, up first, Chief Walker, how are you?
I am well, thank you. So, thanks for having me on tonight. So, I'm here to ask you to accept some money. So, the town of Peterborough, along with most other municipalities and states in the nation, has a hazard mitigation plan. Hazard mitigation plan is a plan that the community develops to help identify hazards that exist here. For example, ours are, you know, weather hazards, whether it's snow, flooding, also earthquakes, to cyber attacks. And then determine ways that we, as a community, can work to mitigate those hazards. Hazard mitigation plan does two things. One, it helps us plan, whether it's infrastructure projects, roadways and drainage, or other things like community development and, you know, and growth within, within areas of the town. The plan is required to be updated every five years. The last plan was approved by FEMA in April of 2016. So, April of 2000, excuse me, of 2021 is when our update is due back to FEMA. In order to help us navigate through sort of the ever-changing landscape of FEMA's requirements and the nuances of it, the town would like to hire a consultant to work on this with this plan. The last time we went through this plan in 2016, we worked with Carol Oldaby as a consultant. Some of you may remember Carol as the previous term planner. So, the biggest thing that we, the biggest benefit to us last time, having the consultant on board is federal government had changed the format of the hazard mitigation plan. So, having Carol on board is somebody who had done a number of these, even with the new format, was really beneficial to us. This time going forward, there have been some subtle changes. And again, they're always looking for various things to change with this. We'd like to look to bring Carol back on board to help shepherd us through this. In order for communities to be able to afford contractors, the Department, the State Department of Homeland Security and Border Insurance Management has made money available through the pre-disaster mitigation grant program. The total value of this grant is up to $12,000. That grant is based upon our community size. We have no say in how much money we're eligible for. And there is a 25% match. So, we would have to provide 25% of whatever dollar amount is spent towards this grant. The match can be a soft match or an in-kind match. The last time we utilized this grant, we used the staff time involved. Myself, the police chief, number DPW staff, including Seth McLean, Nate, some Tim Rose from the Highway Department are involved. Town administration is also involved, along with planning, building, IT, GIS. So, as those staff folks come in and get involved, those staff members' time can be used as that, to go towards that match. So, the match does not require us to raise or appropriate any separate funds beyond what is in our operating. So, my request tonight would be that the town accept the conditions of the hazard mitigation grant. And I have some very specific language, which I think you have in front of you, Tyler, for that.
Or did you?
Is that sure? Okay, so, to look at that, and that would authorize the town to go forward and complete the grant agreement with the state of New Hampshire for the hazard mitigation, hazard mitigation grant funds to allow us to the completion of the hazard mitigation plan. One thing that you do have the option to do is, in your discussion tonight in the motion, nominate a single individual to sign on behalf of the board for this. As long as that is part of the motion and reflected in the minutes, that is possible. One advantage is during these COVID times, we're all meeting remotely. It saves having to shepherd a document around amongst the three members of the board. So, that is an option that you folks have to go forward with this grant, as long as you make it part of the motion and part of your vote.
Okay, my "I do" was a question.
Sure.
I don't seem to see our, our suggested.
Hold on one second here. I will.
Was it in the pack? No.
Can you read it out?
Yeah, I'm actually, if I can share.
As far as nominating someone to sign, would that be the town administrator or one of the Select Board Members?
One of the Select Board Members, Town Administrator.
There you go.
About it. Oh, sorry, Walker, not Yanks.
You have to specify now. So, can you see that there?
I can, sure.
Yep. So, that is the recommended language for the minutes to, again, satisfy the requirements. And the requirements for this are established by FEMA for the acceptance of that.
Okay. Now, do you want me to, I can make the motion and could I authorize, make the motion for Rodney to authorize it?
Yeah.
Authorize Rodney to sign?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so I'll make the motion that the Select Board, in a majority vote, accepted the terms of the pre-disaster mitigation grant program as presented in the amount of $9,000 to update the community's local hazard mitigation plan. Furthermore, the board acknowledges that the total cost of the project will be $12,000, in which the town will be responsible for a 25% match, and that's $3,000. The board authorizes Town Administrator Rodney Bartlett to sign any and all such documents relating to the matter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we need to discuss this any further? I think it's a, it's a great plan. It's a good, you know, it's good to get some grant money. And thank you, Chief, for, for working on this. Anybody else? Going once? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it's unanimous. Thank you, thank you very much for that.
All right. Stop sharing. Stop share, there we go.
Great. All right. Anything else related to the, I know in shortly when we appoint some people, there are, there are members of the Hazard Mitigation Plan Committee in there. Well, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, folks.
On to new business. You can stick around and find out how much candy you're gonna have to buy if, or not. We're on trick-or-treating. What have we decided?
Actually, gonna turn this over to Ed to give you an update as well.
Ed Walker.
He already knows. He already knows that one.
I should have panicked on Ed Yank's face, I wanted to clarify that.
I would have been glad to comment on my.
Yeah, anyway. So, as you folks are aware, there have been a lot of modifications to things going in our lives based on COVID-19. And unfortunately, Halloween is no exception to that. If you look at the guidance that was produced by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, they list your typical Halloween event, which is trick-or-treating, as a high-risk event, or higher-risk event. And, you know, initially, when I thought about this, I sort of had a hard time understanding how that worked. And State Department of Homeland Security, along with the New Hampshire Municipal Association and DHHS, Department of Health and Human Services, did a webinar sort of explaining for towns how this worked. And the way that they explained it, I thought, did a really good job. We typically look at close contact as, you know, they say 15 minutes at a distance of less than six feet. So, when you look at an individual, either somebody giving out candy at their home or somebody going up, you know, as a little hobgoblin and getting candy, although each individual interaction may not be that long, there is the potential for the chemo or the effect. So, if you were to, you know, go to a number, or interact with a number of individuals for a period of time and, you know, either you or that, that person you're interacting with does not have, is not wearing a face mask, is not wearing face masks properly, or any other number of factors that contribute to what's considered a close contact, there is still a risk of it. So, in, in light of that information and looking at that, we, as a, you know, Town Administration, Police Recreation Department itself, had a couple of long conversations and tried to come up with an event that we felt would be a safe event. So, building off of the previous year's event in Depot Square, which is referred to as the trunk retreat. And a trunk retreat is also listed as a higher-risk event, because essentially it's the same thing as trick-or-treating at a house. The Recreation Department is looking to develop or to run, already developed, a drive-through Halloween event. So, the idea of the event is utilizing a large parking lot, which was secured in the Bose Farm Business Complex, thanks to Chub Woodin, the owner of Juniper Properties, who agreed to allow us to use space down there. People will be able to drive through. We're looking at having various organizations and groups in town, you know, set up their trunks or their areas and working to deliver, whether it's through a PVC pipe, through a hand grab, or through something else, a way to deliver the candy to the kids in their vehicles in a socially-distanced fashion. The families would drive through, they'd have a chance to look at the cars or areas that are decorated. There's also gonna be a separate picture-taking area set up with a backdrop, similar to what they had done at, when they had the Depot Square event, to allow folks to, you know, get out of their car in front of this backdrop, have a picture taken, and then get back in their car and leave. Again, all of this set up to look at allowing for social distancing and helping to keep our community safe. As we were, as we were developing this too, one of the things that really played into it for us as a community is the school district. You know, Conval School District encompasses nine communities. The number, you know, students from every one of those communities, Conval High School in our town, students from half of those communities come to our middle school. And, you know, our elementary school is the largest elementary school in the district. So, really, in looking at this, it goes beyond just, you know, keeping individuals safe. It really is working to keep the community safe. You know, the school district's done an enormous amount of work in talking with Dr. Rizzo Saunders, you know, Superintendent about this. They've gone through a lot of extraordinary measures to, again, provide for social distancing in their education plan. And we felt that it was, you know, important for us, where we have so many kids from other communities interacting with the children in our communities, that we made sure we created something that would, you know, be safe for folks. That being said, we also realized that probably our folks in this community want to do traditional trick-or-treating. So, a couple of things that we want to stress is, if you do trick-or-treat, we are asking people this year, as in past years, to look at that 5:00 to 7:00 PM timeline. You know, the 5:00 to 7:00 PM does a couple of things. One, it keeps the kids off the street, you know, or lets motorists know sort of when to expect the potential people who are walking around in the neighborhoods. It allows people that are willing to accept trick-or-treaters at their house a timeframe to identify it. So, that 5:00 to 7:00 PM. The other thing, though, is we want to make sure people do not feel an obligation to give out candy. You know, there, these are difficult times, you know. And speaking with Chief Gennard, the majority of calls that the police department received around trick-or-treating were not people wanting to know when it was. It was people in this community concerned about what they would do when all these kids wanted to come up to their house. And, you know, a lot of them were looking at it from the standpoint of protecting themselves or protecting their neighbors in their community. So, again, you know, we, we want to make sure that this event is being run to provide an, an activity for our community that we feel is a safe activity or safe or alternative to the builder or trick-or-treating. You know, I think we realize people may still do that. You know, certainly, families can get together. If there are family groups or extended family groups that have continually been together, continue to get together. Just really take a look at the CDC's website and their specific guidance around Halloween, talking about the low-risk, the moderate-risk, and the higher-risk activities. And, you know, and think about what you're doing and think about what those impacts could be on the community. Couple of quick points. There is a press release that will be going out shortly after this meeting on that, has some more details. The registration for the event, we manage through the Peterborough rec site. Registration, we managed to help maintain flow of people. Where it is a drive-through event, we want to have people staggered, so we can sort of manage it. Everybody isn't showing up at 3:00, or everybody isn't showing up at, you know, it'll run from 3:00 to 6:00. People aren't all showing up at 5:30. So, we're asking folks to register ahead of time to help manage the flow. Like I said, there will be an opportunity for folks to take pictures and do that. So, really, as, as we went through, we believe that this was the safest way to give the folks in our community an opportunity to enjoy Halloween.
All right. Well, thank you, Chief. It sounds like a lot of work went into figuring out an alternative, and that, that sounds like a lot of fun over there. That's a big parking lot and seems like it can get a lot of cars going in and out of there safely. And seems like a really good, really good plan. I do, I personally do appreciate that. And I know, I know many people that have been concerned about this and thinking about it will, will appreciate that as well.
Just one other quick thing. Folks that want to have a booth, if you will, if you want to call it for that. Lisa Bets of the Recreation Department, they've set up a form with some guidelines. Also, I probably didn't mention it, but, you know, there will be guidelines for both the volunteers there, the folks that are giving out treats, as well as the, the kids that are trick-or-treating and families in terms of wearing masks, social distancing, hand sanitation, all those things are gonna be provided.
Great. Yeah, people could have some fun, you could have some fun with, with the Rube Goldberg type setup where, might take a little long, but, but, you know, there could be clever ways to get, get the candy. You know blow darts, though, people?
Yeah.
No fake blow darts with the candy, that won't work. All right, well, thank you, Chief. On another note regarding, you know, we've, it's been a while since we've had a COVID-19 update from you. And I know we, our numbers have been either zero or very few cases. And we've, we've been quite lucky in our region. And, and the coordination with Manana Community Hospital and the town of Peterborough to have the mask-up program. And we had those nice signs put at the entrances to town. And I contacted you the, last week, I think, about a sign that I noticed that had gone missing. And, and it's my understanding that they were removed, they were removed without authorization. Is that the best way to put it?
That's a good way to put it, yes. We do have replacement signs, I just have to get those up. But, Manana Community Hospital was gracious enough to replace those signs. The one on 123 at the Sharon Line and the one on 202 at the Jaffrey Line were both re-appropriated. And yeah, so we had those, but we do have the signs to replace with that. The other, you know, the, in, in looking at that, you know, you do bring up, we have been very fortunate with the numbers here. But I think if you look, you know, to the south of Massachusetts and starting to see a little bit of an increase, if you look county-wide, Hillsboro County has had a little more of an uptick than the, some of the other counties in the state. You know, Tresor, Sullivan, Merrimack Counties that border us have been pretty good. But Hillsboro continues to have a little bit of an uptick. And a lot of that could be, if you look at the, the grading, Massachusetts grades, all of its communities, some of those communities directly south of the Nashville-Hollis Brook line, that sort of that strip there through the Route 3 area and south, have started to have a little bit of a resurgence.
Yeah.
Again, vigilance, vigilance is important, and that, you know, that's the message we have to continue to get out. You know, we, we've done really well. It's been a lot of hard work by a lot of people, and it's been very difficult for folks to adjust, and it continues to be difficult. But I think it's, our, our success does show how important this is.
Yeah, we're not out of the weeds yet, not out of, out of danger. Yes, Ed Youngst?
I just have a question back to trick-or-treating. I mean, if that press release that's gonna go out, does it? I mean, I know it's encouraging people to do various things, but is it gonna be worded in such a way that general neighborhood trick-or-treating, for example, is discouraged? Or, or, that's probably the least, the most we could do is discourage it. I don't know if we could say it can't happen, but I just, I err on the side of safety. Personally, I always think that we should do as much as possible to, and, and not to have people think they automatically have to be prepared to do any neighborhood, you know, have big groups of people coming through. So, I just, I wasn't sure exactly what, what it was gonna say about that.
Chief, do you have that language right in front of you?
So, the first paragraph, "The town is asking all residents to participate in this event as opposed to a higher-risk activity such as door-to-door trick-or-treating," is outlined in the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention guidelines. And then there's a direct link to those guidelines. And then further down, it talks about if you do go or are willing to accept trick-or-treaters, or again, reiterating, following the CDC guidelines and providing those hours at 5:00 to 7:00 PM.
I'm okay, I'm good.
Okay, great. Yeah, thanks, Chief. Chief, do you know anything about our outdoor? Well, you probably do, because it's a fire danger. The outdoor watering ban, are you gonna, you gonna give us all our information this evening?
Well, along, well, but along with the outdoor watering ban, there also is a statewide ban on outdoor burning. The governor actually in proclamation last week did an outdoor burn ban. And it's been interesting, because, you know, and I think when you talk about the watering ban, Rodney can, can speak to this. You know, we've had a couple of wet days in there and what are called Class II days, which are moderate-risk days. And people want to know why they still can't burn. You know, the, the fire weather is a snapshot of the risk for fire growth and fire spread on this particular day. But the land around us, the woods, are still incredibly dry. There still is, there is no water out there. The soils are dry, the grounds are dry. So, although, you know, there is not a huge risk for, or a lower risk for a fire to start or for rapid spread, if a fire does start, it has potential to be devastating because of that underlying lack of water. And that actually ties directly into, you know, where we are for that watering ban.
Right, yeah. I knew you'd, I knew you'd have.
Segway for the Town Administrator.
Yeah. Always concern for us. So, that, that'll lead us over to Rodney. You gonna give us an update on where, how we got to this watering ban, right?
Certainly. One of the, one of the things that the Utilities Department does do is monitor the static water level of our wells. The static level is the level of the groundwater table prior to us running our wells and beginning to draw it down for supply to the community. Most of the spring and summer remained very stable. And about two weeks ago, we started to see a drop in our static levels, a drop in the groundwater table. And over those two weeks, the static level has dropped approximately a foot. It certainly doesn't create an emergency or a danger at this particular junction, but it certainly is important that we do take the steps, as outlined in our, in our code, that it's appropriate to issue a mandatory outdoor watering ban. Obviously, this time of year, that's one of our dwindling demands. But it's certainly to start with that, so that we have as little impact to the groundwater table as possible. Even the projections from the Department of Environmental Services, it's to continue to have a dry fall. And hopefully, that during the later fall and winter months, our, our snowfall is reasonable. And we have a relatively wet winter, so we get in much better shape by springtime.
Sounds, sounds good. And all the more reason why this, the Cold Stone Springs project coming onboard and, and going through and being authorized and all that is so important for the town, right?
Certainly, it provides access to another whole well system. And to be able to divide our demand amongst four well systems as opposed to three certainly puts us and Jaffrey in that particular case in a much better position to deal with trouble.
Very good. And speaking of water, we recently, the town recently received an award at the wastewater treatment facility. And you wanna congratulate those guys?
The Utilities Division has been running the present wastewater treatment plant since 2012. Obviously, have done an excellent job. The sequential batch reactors and the aerobic aeration system does take a fair amount of technical background and, and routine monitoring, monitoring, not only during the work week, but all seven days of the week. And the crew out there does an excellent job, and they were recognized for that. So, kudos to them.
Yeah, congratulations to them. Great work. Yeah, you know, we, we're all, we're all responsible for the water we use, right? And to put it back into the ground as best as we can is probably our best effort for the planet, yeah?
Certainly is important.
Yeah.
We will need our vote on the outdoor watering ban. Put that in place.
Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion. That we constitute an outdoor watering ban.
I second it.
All right, I think it's, yeah, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Makes good sense, thank you. Next up on the agenda, recently, we were contacted and with an inquiry regarding Peterborough becoming a Purple Heart Town. And if you look around Southern New Hampshire, there's a good trend going on where, where towns are doing this. And there's a, there's a Purple Heart Trail. You can go on their, on a website and, and find that. And it, it seemed appropriate for Peterborough to join that, join the ranks there. So, do we need to, should we discuss this, or should I just read it and ask for a motion to accept it? We've all seen it, I believe, yeah?
Yep. Sounds like the right thing to do to me.
All right. So, "Purple Heart Town Proclamation. Whereas the people of the town of Peterborough, New Hampshire have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the citizens of our community who have selflessly served in the armed forces. And whereas citizens of our community have been killed in action while serving in the armed forces and have been posthumously awarded the Purple Heart for their ultimate sacrifice. And whereas citizens of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart for their bodily sacrifice of being wounded by the hand of the enemy while engaged in combat. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration that was created as the badge of military merit, made of purple cloth in the shape of a heart with the word "merit" sewn upon it on August 7th, 1782, in Newburgh, New York, by General George Washington. And whereas the heritage it represents is sacred to those who know the price paid to wear the Purple Heart. And whereas August 7th is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Day. And now, therefore, it be proclaimed, we, the Peterborough Select Board hereby..." And now therefore it be proclaimed, we, the Peterborough Select Board hereby proclaim Peterborough, New Hampshire, a Purple Heart town, honoring the service and sacrifice of those from the community who were awarded the Purple Heart while serving in our nation's wars. And also be it proclaimed, we, the town of Peterborough, New Hampshire, will recognize August 7 annually as Purple Heart Day and urge the people and organizations of Peterborough to display the American flag as well as other public expressions of recognition of our Purple Heart recipients given under our hand this 29th day of September 2020." Do I have a motion to approve that?
So move.
All right.
I'll second that.
Then Bill's going to second it, sure. All right, yeah, this, this seems like a wonderful, wonderful thing to, to honor our veterans with. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good one. August 7th, well, we'll have, have some time before we get around to that, so. And then next up, we have a proclamation for, let me get back to my agenda. For Mafalda Muffy Bocelli Ames, longstanding citizen of the town. Bill, you're going to take this one?
Yeah, the proclamation reads as follows. "Whereas Mafalda Muffy Bocelli Ames, a daughter of Italian immigrants, has permanently resided in the town of Peterborough since the day of her birth, September 28, 1925, through present day. And whereas Mafalda has demonstrated outstanding patriotism as a member of the Auxiliary Committee and a volunteer on the Patriotic Committee, calling over 200 veterans each year to inform them of events arranged for transportation and encourage participation in Memorial Day and Veterans Day parades in which she proudly and tirelessly participated herself until 89 years of age. And whereas Mafalda during her 25 years as a union worker for the Peterborough AMP brought attention to harmful effects on employee health resulting from the misuse of a toxic chemical spray, therefore resulting in an eventual chain-wide ban. And whereas Mafalda has contributed to the cultural fabric of Peterborough by serving as a resource of historical knowledge, providing detailed family histories to the Menaduck Center for History and Culture and generously donating documents, artifacts, and family memorabilia to the Peterborough Town Library and the Menaduck Center for History and Culture. And whereas Mafalda has been an active community member and has for decades demonstrated commitment to the betterment of Peterborough, the town she has called home for her entire life. Now therefore, we, the members of the Select Board and, uh, Select Board of the Town of Peterborough do hereby proclaim Mafalda Muffy Bocelli Ames to be a shining example of citizenship and express our gratitude for the many gifts she has bestowed upon our community in her 95 years, set in our, set in our hands on this sixth day of October 2020."
Hey, that's today. Nice, very nice, that's lovely. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept that, yeah.
I'll second it.
Well, it's all in favor, right?
Oh, you're on.
Yeah, that's neat, what a, what a neat life. And I've, I've been on the Heritage Commission for years. I'd, I'd been the benefit of hearing some of Muffy's stories and yeah, it's great. Good for her. All right, very nice. Moving on to old business. We have, uh, we did add Karen Hatcher into the, into the old business mix.
I see Karen.
Welcome back. Here for an update with what the town is doing regarding racial justice.
Yep, well, you, you asked for an update, so I wanted to provide one to you, which I did earlier today in writing. I will cover the main points of it and then just take any questions you might have. So as you're aware, earlier this year, the board, the Police Department, Fire and Rescue, and the administration participated into online community meetings to hear concerns regarding racial justice from our community. And that led us to take some additional steps, including doing one-on-one phone interviews with 16 community members to hear their ideas and suggestions. And we used that as a basis for some next steps to look at what we needed to do. Since that time, we initiated a partnership with the Menaduck Center. And they are currently hosting a multi-part community conversation on racial justice in our community, where 35 people have registered and two sessions have been held thus far. Selectman Ward and Selectman Yangst, Chief Ginnard and myself are representing the town. And those have been really fruitful conversations. There's another one scheduled for October 18th. And then the idea is that over the winter, small groups will meet either online or by phone. And then the group will reconvene when the weather allows for gathering again in the spring. We've been outside and it's been lovely, actually. Also, we worked with the library staff to promote a big community read of the book, "I'm Still Here: Black Dignity in a World Made for Whiteness" by Austin Channing Brown. And that is currently taking place this month, so that's underway. In addition, I met with Chief Walker multiple times. We have drafted a project overview for what we think will be a good way to review the Peterborough Community Crisis Response System, which will allow us to take a look at how we respond to what the community needs when in crisis. And so we provided to you a draft of that earlier today. It's still being worked on, but I wanted you to see where we were. And the thought there is that following the elections, we'll start to put that together. Also, you should have received from Chief Ginnard today his update, which had to do with responding to the commission, commission's recommendations from the state and what the training programs will look like there. So you have that information as well. So we, bottom line, we've taken the concerns of the community seriously. We are moving forward in the ways that we can do that with capacity. But we are not letting go of, of what we promised to do and continuing to go forward. So that's the progress update at this point.
Yeah, thanks everybody for working on that. I know Chief Ginnard has been at it, so great, thank you.
Welcome. Any questions or?
If I could just comment, because I, I'm new to the board, of course. First public meeting since all of the attention was placed on this, this matter with what we've been seeing on television and so on for, for a number of years, probably. And I just want to express my support for the way the town is responding. I too have personally talked to the chief about it. I have read all the stuff Karen gave me to read about the governor's recommendations. I didn't read the whole 151 pages, only the recommendations. I am supportive of it. And I know from the conversation I had when I first got on the board with Chief Ginnard that he is supportive of it. And I'm supportive of all the efforts and, and I believe that we can, we can learn a lot from this and get a lot of benefit from the training. So I just, again, I wanted to express that I'm with everybody on this.
Great.
Thanks, Ed.
We did get one question about this. Zach Green asked if he saw that we have an ad out hiring a new police officer, which we do. We have an open position and wanted to know if citizens would be participating in the hiring, hiring process. And Ed, I know that Ed Yangst, you sat on the Promotions Board and as a citizen member. And I believe Laura Gingras was also invited to participate that, in that as a member of the community. Can you talk a little bit about that process?
Yes, I'm really glad I was asked to participate in that. I did. And I really, it's a good thing. There were three police officers, two from Peterborough, one from Hudson and myself. And all parties, all four of us had very good questions, very good follow-up questions. We did talk about de-escalation and things like that. It was a very healthy process. Personally, I, I think that, I mean, you know, you, you can't get too many people involved in this or it gets unwieldy, but I think it's always a good idea to have, you know, this kind of a board. I know when I was a selectman in the early 2000s, I was asked, and I think the other two selectmen were too, at various times to be on boards representing somebody who wasn't a police officer and somebody who ultimately is responsible for the town to be on, on a board. I like that idea and I, and in, and probably having maybe one more person that's not affiliated with the town government might not be a bad idea either. It's a good process. I felt really good about it. And I learned a lot about, actually, well, one, one officer I knew well, Ernie Belteid, I knew well. But I learned a lot about Vince and, and the, on the two applicants that were applying for the job. I learned a lot about them and I was, I, I wish people could have heard some of the things. One, one question was, what's the worst thing you had to deal with? I'm not going to go into detail, but it was, both of them were pretty scary and horrific and could have led to what a big problem, somebody getting hurt or killed. And the way they handled them, both of them, was they de-escalated. Everybody went home safely. So it was a good experience for me and I, and I think it's, I'm really happy I did participate in.
And this is the same kind of process that we'll be going, that we'll be using for the interviews for the new officers. There, it is a multi-step process. They have to pass, of course, background checks. There is a written exam, there is a physical exam before you actually get down to the final selection and the final interviews. So it's, it will be a while, but it is, I think, you know, that if Chief Ginnard were here, he would agree that it's really valuable to have outside input. It was, you know, really great to have the, the input from, from Ed Yangst. And I know that we'll be looking for people to participate in the future who can, you know, really bring a viewpoint that is, you know, really helps us as we go through the selection process. It was unfortunate Laura Gingras was supposed to be part of that particular interview panel and she was unable to make it because of a scheduling problem. But having someone there from the hospital, particularly, you know, with the amount of responses that we make up there, you know, on behalf of people within mental health crisis and other situations, it's really valuable to have someone from the hospital participating in that, in that, that, excuse me, that process. So we'll certainly be doing that again in the future.
Nicole, if I could offer, I, I know in my conversations with Chief Ginnard, as relates to the racial justice issue and all of what's come up, he's been very open and interested to have community members be part of that process. So it seems to me that if people are interested, they should reach out directly to Chief Ginnard.
Good idea. All right, thank you. That was a good question. Thank you for, thank you for bringing that up. All right, the contract extension slash authorization for Drum.
I can speak to that since it's part of the EDA if you'd like me to.
Yeah, sure.
Great, just to let you know that, so Drum has been doing social media posting primarily for the better part of, it's been more than a year, I think now. They've been on three-month extensions. And this contract extension is a shift a little bit away from so much, so it, it just reduces the number of social media posts from 12 a month to eight and takes more of their time to update the Peterborough Works website so that as people come and find out more about town, it actually is an updated site and it connects, it will connect more seamlessly to the new town of Peterborough site, which Ally's been working on. So we're really looking at creating a place where people land, where the information that they get about potentially moving their business or moving their family to our town is providing all the information we want them to provide. So, so that's the fundamental difference. It's a reduction, actually, we were, the contract has been 1350 per month. It will be 1200 per month. So it's less and it's for three months going forward. So the EDA has recommended approval and we, and they're asking the Select Board for its approval.
Yeah, I, I did, I read through that, the, the contract renewal and the modifications and was pleased to see that they, they were lowering their price. And it may, makes complete sense that they, they, I think part of it was their, the, the effort to find people doing things together has been, has been kind of halted. So, and that, and that's part of the charm of a lot of their work is, is making Peterborough, well, showing how great Peterborough is with all its, all its fun and great activities and that sort of thing. So, yeah, so anyway, makes sense to me and I, I would make that motion to, to extend with modifications this contract.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that. I like just to point out that this was an unprompted reduction on their part as well. So, you know, hats off to anybody that comes out ahead of something like that and lowers their price out of the goodness of their heart.
Right, and that, and also like to reiterate that they're, they're not, they're not on the web across the planet or the country or whatever, they live, they're right here in town and working. And, you know, they'll probably benefit from trick-or-treating down at Vos Farm because I know they have an office down in that complex. And hopefully they can get some good shots of that maybe, so. All right, all in favor for that motion?
Aye.
Aye, yeah, great work for them and, and EDA, thanks. That's, you know, another great committee doing great things.
And Karen, before you go, did you want to update on the bingo?
I do, yes. Nicole, you want to share?
There you go.
Here we go. So we're excited, so, yeah, so it's exciting. Peterborough Restaurant Bingo kicks off this Friday, October 9th. We have 11 restaurants participating. It's, it's going to be fun and it's a way for us to keep our restaurant community going through the colder months as folks may not want to be sitting outside or may not be comfortable dining in. So the Restaurant Bingo only requires that folks, you know, spend $10 per visit. They can do gift cards, they can do takeout, they can do dining in or merchandise. And the idea here is play a bingo, you know, so get a bingo. You get a stamp when you go to the restaurant, you can pick up your card at the restaurant. You get a stamp when you spend 10 bucks. And it encourages people to go from restaurant to restaurant and even have some free spaces. And every card that gets turned in will get some, a one, a really cool Peterborough magnet just for playing and turning in a card. And, and then those cards get entered into a drawing every two weeks for bigger prizes. So we really want to encourage everyone, starting on Friday, to go to any one of these 11 restaurants, pick up your card and play bingo to keep our restaurants thriving. So very excited that this all came together and want to thank our restaurants for working with us on something we hope will be very successful all the way around. So yay, play bingo, get good food.
Karen, you made reference to some bigger prizes?
Yes.
I mean, inquire your minds.
So, so, so every two weeks there'll be these, there are prizes that are Peterborough branded. And we have some outdoor blankets for when you are dining outside. We have some really sweet tote bags for when you're dining out. We have wine cozies and even a six-pack cozy. So there's just some fun pieces that, you know, things you can actually use when you're, when you're dining out, outside. So, so that plus the magnets and, and we've got enough of those. So everybody who turns in a card will get one of those. So we'll just be showing our Peterborough pride as we, as we support our restaurant community.
Karen, where can people pick up the bingo cards?
Bingo cards are at Aesop's, Bipa and Lulu's, Chef Banks, Thai Cafe, Diola Burritos, Harlow's Pub. Chef Banks, Thai Cafe, Diola Burritos, Harlow's Pub, Kogetsu Restaurant, Nature's Green Grocer Cafe, Noni's Restaurant, Pancho's Pizza, Post and Beam and Waterhouse. And they will be there Friday. So they're not there yet, but you can pick them up Friday when you go to those restaurants.
Should, wait, should you just have said spoiler alert? Are we hearing that Harlow's will be opening Friday?
Well, Dave is part of the promotion. You haven't heard that he's opening, but he is selling gift cards and he is. So you can buy gift cards and merchandise to keep Harlow's going until takeout's ready.
Okay.
Heard that he's making good progress. So he wanted to be part of this. So, and it runs through the end of the year. So we expect that Harlow's will be open before then. So those are the restaurants that are participating and there'll be posters around town and posters in those restaurant windows and it's all over our Facebook page and on those restaurant Facebook pages. So. So, and there should be a story in the Ledger on Thursday. We'll see.
I think this is more important than ever because, you know, now the colder weather is coming, it's, it's been tough enough for them and I know the restaurant business pretty well because I had a number of restaurants on that list. Under some, under different owners were clients of mine when I had my business here and it's a tough business and this, we are fortunate that we have so many places to choose from in town, depending on what we, what we want. And, you know, and we keeping them open during this time, which could get worse this winter, other sicknesses and so I just think it's very important and thank you for doing that. And I hope the people in Peterborough take it to heart and get out and enjoy a good meal once in a while and or take out meal or whatever, supportive.
Yeah, thank you, Ben.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Coming up with that all on your own, Karen, or?
Yeah. Well, I want to say, I would shout out to Cassie Sullivan and Caitlin Smith from Noni's, you know, who were my committee. But that idea actually came after a good nap. So just want you to know, naps are good.
All right. Now that you're not on the board, you get nap time.
I do.
And that's Cassie Sullivan from Cooper's.
Yeah. And even though they're not participating, Cassie and was part of the committee to help bounce ideas and, and worked with me. So thanks to those guys.
And they're working hard to get back up and running too. So we're, we all looking forward to that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, yeah, this is great program. You know, so many of us are miserable. We have things going on that are, that are just exacerbated by this pandemic and on the general way that we're going these days and to put it lightly. And this is, this is a nice fun thing to hopefully get some people through some, some more tough times. So thank you. Yeah. Great, great. Good thinking, good direction to go. And, you know, all those restaurants are great and, and yeah, thanks.
Welcome.
Good one. Next up, we have members to appoint for boards and committees. And there are quite a few of them and a lot of times we'll, we'll say, you know, I make a motion to approve all these names, but I'd like to just, I'm actually going to read all the committees and all the names because the most important thing in this town are the volunteers that, that get things done, that keep it running, that do the legwork to make it somewhat easy for us as a board to approve things like that contract from Drum, thanks to the EDA's work and that sort of thing. And, and certainly every one of these people on here are, you know, passionate about their town. And I know there are other people that are looking to get involved with committees and that sort of thing. So it's a great resource we have for the town and, and I'm hap, I'm happy to announce that tonight from the, for the Hazard Mitigation Plan Committee, we have Alan Zeller, Seth McLean, Tim Hurley, Scott Gennard, Ed Walker, who's with us, Fash Farshahi, Ed Henault, Danica Malone, Matt Lundstedt and Jason Tremblay. For the CIP Committee, that's the Capital Improvements Committee. Capital Improvement Plan Committee. Sorry, that's a group that gets together and works on the big ticket items for town warrants. Again, Alan Zeller, Robert Hanson, James Kelly. Oh, Ed Youngst, who's here with us as well. Carl Mabzino, Leander McDonald, Valerie Jenkins, Leo Smith and Danica Malone from the Planning Department. For our Recreation Committee, we have Roxanne Loudon, Michelle Rourke as an alternate. Conservation Commission, we're reappointing John Patterson, John Carrick, Bryn DuMoss, Matt Lundstedt and Joanne Carr as an alternate. Our Heritage Commission will have Tina Rapp again next year. The EDA will see James Kelly carrying on. James is very involved. Andy Peterson and Megan Suoco. Agricultural Commission, Alex Walker and Mike Lombard. And trustees of the trust funds, Dr. John Niskins, Jack Will will become a full member. He had been an alternate. So I'll make that motion to approve all of our wonderful volunteers to these committees.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And so if, if some people don't know, the Select Board has the, the pleasure of liaison duties to each of these committees and it's where we see the work of our volunteers and and hear issues that we can advocate for when we come back to the Select Board and, and that sort of thing. So thanks to all those people. Did it, we did say all in favor, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was unanimous. All right, great.
Speaking of, while we were here, of liaisons. I mean, I didn't heard anything official, but I, Karen asked me if I was going to take over hers and one was the Selectment Advisory Committee to the, to the school. One was the EDA. And I was on the CIP anyway, so I don't know if I'm the liaison or what I am, but I'm on that. So that's the only ones I know about so far that I'm supposed to be doing. If there's any others, then somebody's got to let me know. I'll try.
All of them. Didn't we have a meeting that with the Ed was going to be liaison to every committee?
Yeah, I was there.
I don't want to take it away, Bill.
Yeah, I think you, I think you missed that meeting.
Well, I think, I think one of the, one of the other ones Karen had was the Agricultural Commission, but I could take that over Ed because I know the, the SAC and the, and the EDA are pretty intensive ones. So I'll do that one.
I think I'm on that one.
Are you? Oh.
I just have, you know, there hasn't been a lot of meetings.
Yeah, Bill's the liaison for agriculture.
Nice try, Tyler.
Sorry. Come on. I, I did enjoy, when I was the liaison to the commission, I, I enjoyed it because it was, it was good to keep up on what the farmers were all doing and the programs they were having and things that they were coordinating with the school and that sort of thing. It was pretty cool.
I used to be on all three TIFs, but they don't meet that often, but I was on all three because I was a voting planning board member at the time I originally got on and then an alternate planning board. So I qualified to be the planning board person. But now, you know, I understand that I'm not permitted to be an alternate because that would be two of us that possibly could vote and, and it's only supposed to be one select board member and Tyler is the liaison to that now.
Well, do you, are you really, do you really want to be the planning board?
I had that for three years. I think you're doing a great job there. You're probably a little bit more forceful perhaps than I might.
Oh boy, I don't know about that. All right. Well, okay. So, so I think we have them covered and we can also, if we're missing anything, we can catch up with that and. And speaking of the, the, I know Bill's the liaison to the library, but I would also like to mention that our beloved Corinne Karopoulos, Library Director, was awarded Library Director of the Year. And of, of course, it's well warranted, you know, with the project that's going on and the way that's moving along and all she's done for that organization.
That was the, I'm glad you said that because I was just going to, I was waiting for my spot to speak up about that, but you brought it up. So perfect. So it was the New Hampshire Library Trustees Association. I think I'm correct and she was.
Believe that's correct. Yep.
Yeah. And she was co-director of the year along with Jeffrey's Library Director, who her name I forget, but it's not important for the purposes of this meeting. It's all about Corinne. And she, she, well, I am the liaison to that. And it's, it's really being involved with that whole project and, you know, on whatever level that I am, it's, it's truly amazing, the work that she does and the programs that she keeps churning out despite being in a, you know, satellite, two different offices instead of her own library with the project going on. It's, we're lucky to have her. She's, she's unreal and it's no surprise to me, at least or probably really anybody else that's listening that, that she won that award and it's, it's huge. There's a lot of libraries in the state.
Yeah, there are. And certainly in these times, they are providing a much needed service for people and so important. So, yeah, great work. Yeah. Congrats. And, and another kind of a regional collaboration in the Library Director Award, you know, we're, we're, we're getting going with Jeffrey nicely. So it's good, good for the region. All right. Up next, approval of minutes from September 2nd. Perfectly written by Ally Kreutz. Probably taken minutes this evening. We're not careful. And so, has anybody read them?
I have read them.
I don't think I can vote, but I read them, but.
Oh, right.
You guys have to do the motions and the voting because I was not a member. So.
Well, I'll make that motion that we accept those minutes.
And I gladly second them. They're always quite good.
Both in favor, I guess, is the question.
Great. You'll be on the next one.
Ally is also the, the author of the, what is it? Community Dispatch. Weekly Dispatch, which is always spot on with great information. Shout out to Ally.
Yeah, great work.
It's behind the scenes, making stuff happen.
Yeah, I second that. I think that's a great, wonderful thing to get and I guess it's pretty easy to get it if you sign up on the homepage of the website and just can want to get on the select board list or where it says stay informed because she does a great job. It's very professional. So I also second that, that she's really done a good job with that.
Yeah, good point. Good for pointing that out. I forgot to mention that was, that's where you could sign up. Thanks, Ed.
Also in today's, the next shout out, since we're doing it, should be to the, to Seth and Tim. Seth McLean and Tim Rose at Public Works, who, and Rodney, of course, who's always contributing. They just finally took delivery of the new loader slash snow blower, which is going to really improve things around town because the other one won't be breaking twice a storm. And it's a lot quieter from what I understand. So everybody that lives in downtown should be happy.
Finally.
And I think, yeah, and I, well, it's been pretty quiet in your neighborhood, hasn't it, Tyler? Just two minor construction projects going on.
Further background, that I was on the CIP when that first came up and that came from, that, that came from people within, you know, our staff. I mean, that was a great idea to combine the loader part with the snow blower part. And it was wonderful to see that picture today and the dispatch. I agree. That's.
I was watching that process on some level and if they, they spent a lot of time in research and made sure we got the right piece of equipment at the right price too, I might add. So pretty cool process.
All right. I would like to add one other thing, one other mention in other business here. I guess we're in other business. Don't forget, if you, if you feel uncomfortable about making it out November 3rd to vote in person, even though we'll, that we'll have a, a safe environment to do that. Please get your, get your applications in for your absentee ballots and also quickly turn around those absentee ballots. The Town Clerk's Office is processing them accordingly and things are going quite well. Ed, Ed, I know Ed's been over there assisting and that this is, this may be the most important election in our lives. Well, us, us people middle aged and over anyway.
I'm glad I did that because I learned a lot about just how, how busy this is going to be. I mean, we did, you know, when I was there, that was last week, I think, we got the 1,400 out that had already come in. But now there's way, there's lots more coming in. I, I went in there today to drop off my ballot that I already got and voted and submitted it today in person. And she's got lots more requests for ballots. People are still requesting the absentee ballot. So we couldn't emphasize timing. If you, if they want to get an absentee ballot, they should get it in as soon as possible. And the same thing with getting those back because just getting them back is one thing, but there's other processing that has to happen with all those 1,400 plus, however many more we get. They have to be alphabetized. They have to be matched up with the requests. It's a big, way bigger than I, I learned a lot, just being there to see what and hear what had happened. So. He's had, besides me, there's been other volunteers. One lady just came up one day. Said, I just stopped by to see if you needed any help in here. And Linda said she would check on this person and see who she was and make sure she was from Peterborough or whatever else she had to do. And the next day she was in there. It was set, my wife was in there. There were several other volunteers anyway and they were all great. I mean, they volunteered and the job I got was not fun to sit there for three and a half hours putting stickers on an envelope, but it has to be done. And so anyway, this is just a plea for people to get the request in. When you may have your mind, who you want to vote for, get it done and get it back so that they can be counted on Election Day. We don't have any of this foolishness that it's taking too long and all that other stuff that might happen.
Yeah. It's a good thing you don't have to lick stamps anymore, right?
I know. Yeah. Yeah. The postage meter was, was a good thing. I didn't ever get to run that, but my wife did actually one day.
Above your pay grade.
Yeah, it was. Easy job.
That's pretty important, that one.
Yeah. So, and then, so the process is, once they all come back, then on Election Day, when the polls are opened between seven and seven, those all have to get fed through the machine to be counted correctly. So that's, you know, it's a big process to it and just, yeah, make sure, please, people out there. We'll, we'll get, get to it. All right. Anything else?
There was a question about if there was an update on broadband infrastructure. I just want to say that we don't have an update right now, but we will be meeting, staff will be meeting this week along with Bill Taylor to go over where we currently stand with broadband and what options are available to the town to improve our access to broadband, especially given how important that access is right now. So that will be coming back around again. I wouldn't think it would be for the next meeting, but certainly this fall, we will be talking about broadband infrastructure upgrades.
I was going to have a question about that. So I'm glad you brought it up. When I did attend my first EDA meeting as liaison, they talked about that subject too. And they seemed to indicate they wanted to continue looking into getting more choices of people that would help expand our, our network throughout the whole town. And then I read something that's in the consent agenda, I think, that that we might already have a plan, but just need the financing. I mean, I was a little, I, I I'm not sure which, which of those is right, that we should be still looking for other companies, other people or other companies or, or is it a financial thing or?
So I could give a quick update without, well, I mean, there is no real new information. It's hard to tell where people heard the last bit of it, but there's no small amount of effort being put into it. Our planning office, Karen and the community development office, myself, or. Our Planning Office, Karen in the Community Development Office, myself are on it a lot. So one of the things about inviting more people and having more, well, people slash companies involved in options for us is, you know, one of the things that isn't happening anymore is companies aren't just going out and expanding, expanding their broadband infrastructure because, you know, there's a chance that a town meeting can vote on a bond measure to pay for said upgrade. So they're not running out trying to expand just because they want the business. So now they're looking for other, other creative ways of funding, which we are also looking into on a number of different levels. But as to the question about inviting more people or companies to get involved, we, we sent out a request for quotation over the summer. Nicole, that was, went to like, what, 10 broadband providers?
Yes, went to many, many companies.
We heard from one company that was interested in expanding broadband infrastructure in the town. It was a pretty attractive proposal. It was Comcast. They were the only company. And which is, was a little strange because Comcast doesn't, or at least up until that point, hadn't really, you know, messed around with little towns and small projects and stuff. They're more a big city, big, big number company. So like, we are definitely working on it on a lot of different levels. And we'll, we'll see where we're at after our meeting on Thursday. But it's, we're working on it. And out of, you know, I definitely understand the struggles of people that have horrible broadband because I have that myself. And I've worked on it with, you know, Maggie Hassan's office, Annie Custer's office. We've, you know, when I was the president of the Board of Realtors, we, we had a, you know, a lot of discussions about it, even a, even a roundtable discussion with some pretty big heavy hitters around. And it's, it's all about money. So we're working on figuring that out.
And add one detail to that, that process, that RFP process that Bill was just talking about, was part of our attempt to get some of the CARES Act money that came for broadband to build out. We were not successful in that. So we will be looking at other options that do not include, at least as far as that particular pool of federal funds, we do not have access to those. But this is an incredibly complicated issue. It's something that we've been working on since I got here in 2006. It's, it's perennial. We have not stopped having this conversation and trying to work with, you know, various providers, trying to find a way to build out and improve the broadband to the community because it isn't, you know, it isn't just the utility of the future. It's the utility that we need right now. And it's absolutely critical. So, but I do ask that people, please be patient while we try to get through this. It is an incredibly complicated process, and we'll give the board a more detailed update in the future.
Right. One of the other issues about funding that we run into a lot is that percentage-wise to the number of buildings or, say, residents slash businesses in the community, Peterborough is on some scale relatively well-covered. So we don't qualify because we don't, you know, we have very little coverage. They go by percentages. And we're doing all right, even though, I mean, it's like 485 houses or, and businesses don't have access to anything real decent in town. And it's frustrating for a lot of people because there's, you know, there's fiber lines that run on a lot of poles in town. But the infrastructure and equipment to actually transmit those signals and wire them to the individual houses doesn't exist. And that's one of the areas where we need. Another problem is when you're talking about grant money and CARES Act money, one of the other issues is any sort of grant money is, you know, income in your area. And our income is a little bit better than some, not as good as some also. But our income level in Peterborough kind of bumped us out of the running for a lot of grant money, too. So, you know, just everybody know that we're, we're really working on it.
I know it's even worse now with the school situation. Because when I was the Select Board Advisory Committee before, the superintendent begged me to try to do something because not so much Peterborough, there are some in Peterborough, but in the other small towns, they have a worse problem because most of them don't have anywhere near the breadth of coverage that we do. And, and I imagine that's more visible than ever now with the kids trying to, you know,
It sure is.
Go to school from home.
The biggest trouble with it is that, well, I mean, this is just a personal opinion from having watched all of it. But once, once communities start to, you know, other communities like Dublin has done it effectively. And although, at least they're working on it right now, I saw some crews stringing fiber optic through Dublin a few times over the last weeks. I think Ringe and, you know, it was, Claremont was the big one that was like the first in the state to bond it. And so one of the consequences of that is these major providers now see that there's an opportunity for the townspeople to get together and actually foot the bill for this infrastructure improvement. So they have little or no incentive to do it on their own when, you know, like the towns can, can get a loan out to do this type of work. So we are trying to figure out what our next steps are. We'll get there. Just, believe me, it's, it's frustrating.
Is there any possibility that the towns that do bond could then be the internet provider? And, and kind of sidestep these, you know, the monopolies of the two, what is it, two other internet companies?
Around here, it's basically with TDS runs through a number of towns on the other side of the mountain, that they're in the Bennington. And are they, I think they might be over in Antrim, too, in some areas. Then there's Comcast, who only recently seems to have been more interested in coming to a town like us. And then there's Consolidated. I, you know, everybody's got their opinion of Consolidated. Trouble is the signal itself. It's would, you were reliant on these bigger companies. So even if, say, Dublin has the infrastructure, their infrastructure is not paying to string to each individual house in Peterborough. So they may own their infrastructure, but they don't own the capacity to provide the program. So, you know, the infrastructure is only as good as somebody that's willing to transmit through it. So you're hamstrung to the bigger companies completely. There's a lot to know about it.
It's in good hands, anyway. Bill, with you doing this, all this work.
It's, it's a lot. It's frustrating because like, I feel it on a personal level, too, because my road and some others in this box of people here might understand. It's just, yeah. It was a few years ago, I was talking to Annie Custer at a meeting about broadband. And she said, you know, well, so for instance, what's the internet like at your house? I said, well, 10% of the time, it's really bad, and 90% of the time, it's even worse. And she like, kind of looked at me blankly for a minute. She's like, oh, okay. Like, I come down to the townhouse for these Zoom meetings because I can't keep a Zoom meeting going on my, on my own.
That's why you always were here. Now, I, you know, it makes sense, of course.
Well, I've been making a power play to take over Rodney's office, but now he's back around more. I started putting up some nice paintings, but.
Thank you, thank you, Bill.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, should we end the meeting on that downer about cable, internet?
How about another shout out? Is something else good that happened? The bridge in the library are coming along great. Everybody keeps an eye on that stuff. That's, that's the shining news for the town lately.
It is true. And we did get the notice in the Weekly Dispatch about the, the work moving to Saturdays as well for the, for the bridge project. And that's good. That'll help it move along a little quicker. As everyone knows, I have a, I have a Gladys Kravitz eye view of the project. And it's kind of enjoyable, actually, to see that and the library going on at the same time and the progress. And it's, it's almost more fun to watch who gathers on the, on the pedestrian bridge to watch, watch the progress. My, my kid sent me a clip of, there's an Italian word called, Italian word called umarell. And it is the definition, I might, I'm going to paraphrase. It's, it's an elderly man that watches construction sites and asks all kinds of questions as the progress is trying to go on or something like that. And, and, and he was make, they were making fun of me for doing that. And so, yeah, I thought, you know, several of my friends do the same thing. So it's pretty funny.
Coming soon to theaters near you, Rear Window 2 starring Tyler Ward.
Oh, I don't even want to know what that means. All right.
I'd love to go on that bridge and watch. And I'm probably that word taller than you because I'm way older. But I, I was, I go down, I went today after I was in the townhouse for a bit. And I was amazed to see how I've been down there almost every time I come downtown. And I go across the bridge and look at the library and look at the bridge and look at the wall. And most of the time, I'm trying to figure out how they're doing it and what they're doing. But the only one I haven't figured out too much about yet is the wall over on 202. I see stuff there and there's a road down there, but I never can see good what they're doing.
Yeah, they're driving, they're driving giant dump trucks down that steep ramp.
Never in a million years.
I wouldn't want to back one of those things down that hill. Go either way, I don't think.
No. And, and on some good news, I have spoken with a few business owners downtown. We were all very concerned about businesses surviving and the disruption with the bridge project and all that. And, and a few of them have heard no complaints from people trying to find them or needing to go around. So it seems like, it seems like things are working out. So that's a good sign.
We did get one question. I'm going to end on a really positive note. People are asking, how can they volunteer for the town elections to help out? And those people can contact Lynda Guyette at lguette@peterrownh.gov. Or they can email me directly and I'll forward the, I'll forward the offer to volunteer onto Lynda. You can email me at administration@peterrownh.gov. I'm sorry, I'll get that right. Administration@peterrownh.gov. And I'll put that into the comments on Facebook as well.
Great.
Thank you, people.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Good night. Thanks, Ed.
Bye, all.